Try it to one of those food carts that's delicious, delicious.
Are they at the food carts in at Beaverton?
Yeah, yeah, one of the food carts, the green one, the Mexican one, it sells it, yeah, the best.
Nefisa, what are they called?
Quesa birria.
How do you spell that?
It's queso.
Can you E S O?
Yeah, and then birria is B I R R I A, I think.
Okay. I like your roll of your Rs there.
Yeah, but yeah, you have to double R, you have to roll it.
All right, Madam Chair, we are ready to go, and we have Commissioner Willie joining right now, and I will keep an eye out for Commissioner Rogers.
Okay, well, good morning to Thursday, March third, two thousand and twenty-two, the Washington County Board of Commissioners Roundtable. This is Chair Catherine Harrington, and I'm joined by Commissioners Pam Treese, Nefisa Fai, and Vice Chair Willie. First item on the agenda today is meeting kickoff. We have in our packet some updated information that we received from our staff, specifically the rolling agenda. Are there any questions from anyone with regard to the forward-looking calendar where you have questions for our staff today? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, the budget calendar update. Ms. Angie.
Thank you, Chair Harrington and Board. In your packet, there's two attachments. One includes the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three budget meeting dates, and the other attachment is the swim lanes with the same information, but popped out to really detect where we are in the process. So the feedback that staff heard at our last conversation were two primary requests. Number one, that we, the meeting times were quite intensive and long to so add additional dates so that the meeting times can be shorter. In addition, increase opportunity for community public comment throughout the process. So the proposed outline includes our budget orientation, which this year we will also be including information or a brief orientation on the budget equity tool during that budget orientation process. Then we will move into the budget committee meetings and public comment. There will be a public comment portion included with each each of the budget committees meetings. That is new compared to last year. There was, and my understanding of previous years as well, there was not public comment opportunity throughout that process. And then we would move into the budget committee public hearings. As the board can see, that is now spread over two evenings, so the special districts having on one evening, and then the county budget and the lighting district on June second, and then we would move into the final hearing, the board hearing on June, June twenty-first. So it'd be helpful to get a thumbs up or any changes, modifications that the board has to the schedule, so we can inform the committee members, and I, I hope we heard feedback from the board accurately.
I think it's great, and I've seen three commissioners give thumbs up already, so go ahead, Commissioner Treese.
I just want to say thank you for listening, for working this through, both for, both for the commissioners and, you know, for the public. I think that's the end goal, is to make sure we've got the interaction that we need to have, so my kudos to staff. Thank you. It's much appreciated. This is a tough, tough thing to do, and I know that you guys are in a tough position trying to schedule everything, so thank you.
Go ahead, Vice Chair Willie.
Yeah, thank you, Pam. Those are good comments, and I certainly echo those. My question is, I'm assuming these are probably going to be in person? And so are we going to, I guess that maybe that's not a good assumption. But at least as a minimum, if we do go in person for, for even the June ones, would they be also hybrid? So we're going to provide that time on Zoom as well? Are we going to try and do that?
So what staff had discussed is actually still holding the budget meetings virtually due to the ability to have additional, and just easier access for community members. That could be revisited. We could have a hybrid approach. I would not suggest just in person because that does, that does limit ability and schedules. So I think that's, that's up to the board to decide.
Well, that's what I was advocating is that as, yeah, that we'd definitely be hybrid. I mean, when you're talking about pages of numbers, it's hard to do that, quite frankly, on Zoom. And even though, you know, all of us probably have two screens, and so we're looking at a variety of information and things, it's still, to me, much more difficult to have a budget discussion on Zoom. But I'm okay with either way, but I definitely, as a minimum, hybrid.
Other commissioner thoughts at this time? Well, I, I would like to walk this through a little bit because I appreciate that public comment will be part of the budget committee meetings. What I'm trying to sort through in my mind is, you know, just picking meeting one, meeting two, meeting three, meeting four, those sequence. In different ones, folks, some folks really dive into the whole section, you know, topic of a budget. Let's just take the enhanced sheriff patrol one, or Washington, Washington County and Service District for Lighting, right? Huge. Service District for Lighting is teeny compared to Washington County. So a lot of folks really do try to figure out what the budget means. And there are some comments that are just strict comments, but other ones where folks are trying to play back what they're looking for and what their understanding is, but they're looking for a little validation or, or some further understanding to see if, if they, they got it. So I, just thinking back, well, last year was the first time we had as many people in our public hearing as we've ever had. I think it was like nineteen people who commented, and some comments were on the order of this does this, we want you to do this. Pure and simple, but other ones were, seemed more exploratory. We're trying to understand this. Why is it this way? And if I, I was reading this yesterday and wondering, okay, if I put myself in the shoes of that approach, will it be satisfying? Or what, what are we thinking in terms of follow-up to that? You know, are we thinking that after the sequence of one, two, three, four budget committee meetings and public comment, that we might be able to capture what those various questions were and provide a, a a response report to try to better explain and do it that way? So I'm just left wondering on the continuum of improvement. How do we characterize where we were last year, where we are this year, more than just having public comment, you know, in a qualifying manner? How would you describe it? So sorry to be so long-winded to, I'm just trying to get my head around. If I put myself in a community member's shoes, how might I experience it?
So we are on this learning journey together, and I think staff are also, we, we don't know what comments or questions are going to come from the community. What we're prepared to do is to be recording those questions and actually fully transparent Q and A on our website. I'm not sure how many comments we're going to, that are going to come in and what the timeliness on that response is. What we had done last year is produced a full memo. What we feel is, can be clear so that the community can see their question and answer is providing that more, more so in a Q and A kind of format that would be on our website so that they can, they can see. What we can also explore is with Clerk Moss and team, how can we capture email addresses so that we can send that information directly to those community members that do participate in, in these sessions? But this is something that we're going to refine, and after this year, we're very open to feedback, both from our community and of course our budget committee and board on how we can improve.
I, I'm really bought into this is a journey, and we're continuing to refine and adopt new techniques or techniques that are new from year to year. I think in, in summary, I think it will do the agency and the board some good to say, to summarize, this is how we thought we were practicing it last year. And we've increased our own capacity and, and capabilities, I guess. And this is where we're aiming this year. And so that, for example, if we had a, a survey afterwards, this is what we were aiming for, you know? How did you experience that, right? And what would you suggest we try differently for next year, right? That model of continuous improvement, so that's all. I, I really appreciate how, how you and your staff took the, the comments and questions from the board's previous discussion and really shaped up a clearer approach that we feel as board members will help us navigate the, the process with you from your proposed budget to our adoption, all in service to the community, so. And then the, I wanted to check with the board, so in the budget committee public hearings, the approach is to keep those three, on June first, those three service districts together, and then the county budget and all of its component parts and the service district for lighting. Do you see that as a, a good workable approach versus all in one, like we've done previously? Yeah. Okay. Great, great. Well, I think it's worth trying to, and we'll go from there. I think I do wonder a little bit about last year, were we all virtual last year for the budget? Okay, so it was two thousand and twenty where we were still sitting in the room. Okay. Will we be trying hybrid at all in any of our meetings prior to the end of June?
Well, let, let, let's discuss that for, for board meetings. As I have had, well, many of you have asked, Tanya, what's, what's the plan? And I, this is a perfect time to come and have that conversation with the board, because these are your meetings. Staff at any point in time are able to transition with a few week lead time into the hybrid format. So we could move to a hybrid format, starting the first meeting in April, if the board would want to, or choose another date per state law and, and open comment. We will maintain a hybrid moving forward and that open, in that platform, so that's not a concern. We do have, you know, we, we do have some staff members that are working through their own family needs. I, I'm going to call it life cycle care needs because it's not always just children. It can also be parents and households, and so from a staff and to encourage that flexibility, we will have staff continuing to participate in meetings in the hybrid format as well. But it's really up to the board and what the board's preference is, because these are your meetings.
Well, I'm most concerned for our employees and for the public. They've been through so many transitions and demands over the last couple of years. And, you know, I don't want Commissioner Rogers before tax season through August, pretty much, to go through any sort of herky-jerky. I've, I've been thinking in my mind and promoting myself that let's just not put anyone through that until after the school year, so aim for July first. And I think that, from my standpoint, as long as we're managing the virtual aspect so community can participate, that's as accessible as we can be, but go ahead, Commissioner Treese. Thank you.
You know, I, along with whether or not we're going to be hybrid, I, you know, I, maybe we can talk a little bit about our timing, too. It may be better for some of us to start at nine versus eight-thirty. It may be better for some of us to, to to start even earlier. I doubt that, but I thought I would just throw it out and say, could, could we have a discussion? Tanya, you brought, brought up the fact that we're, you know, we're all living in a situation where the pandemic has magnified what our individual needs are and, and has reinforced the concept of flexibility for all of us. And I think that it's worth a conversation around our table about when we start our regular board meetings, as well as whether or not they're hybrid or not, and what the expectations are, frankly, if they are hybrid. Are we, you know, do we have an expectation that people that are board members will be in the room when it's hybrid? You know, I, I think that's, well, that wasn't really clear, so I see heads going, but I, I don't know that it was clear, and, and I'd like to have that open discussion because even amongst the five of us, we have different parameters.
Yeah. I'm open for maximum flexibility, that's why. The days of one-size-fits-all are gone. Go ahead, Vice Chair Willie.
Yeah, I guess maybe somewhere in between those parameters, you know, I don't want to wait till July. I think, I think most of my meetings are going to be going to in-person probably pretty shortly. April first, maybe. I have a lunch meeting today at twelve-thirty with the chamber. It's obviously in-person. So I think everybody's pretty anxious about transitioning back to something that we used to call normal. So somewhere in there, I also, you know, I'm sensitive to what Tanya is talking about. Certainly staff needs and family needs and those kinds of things. That's why I'd really strongly advocate that we, we continue to be hybrid forever, actually, because I do like the fact that we are accessible to the general public much better that way. But I think we, as a group, tend to function and interact better in person, and so that's why I was advocating that we get back to meeting in person sooner than later.
Go ahead, Commissioner Rogers.
Well, I, I don't want to speak for Nefisa, but she has some special issues and needs, I think, at home. And right now, as you pointed out, for the next thirty days, I have some unusual time constraints as well. I like the idea of hybrid for the public. We're talking about different groups. The public is participating much better in, in hybrid than they will in person. Pam and I argue about who lives the furthest from the county seat. I can, I guess that her district, probably not unlike mine. People don't want to travel from Tiger to Hillsboro. They, they'll jump on a line, and they love the, the ability to do that, but they're not going to get in their car to do that, so that's the public. And Tanya, this question is to you. I, I've always thought we're sort of an employee group similar to your employees. Is it my understanding that you will not allow hybrid work in, in the county?
It's a good, it's a good question. Yes, we do allow hybrid work. There are functions that, due to the function, hybrid work is not applicable. However, we do have our telecommute policy that was adopted just shortly before the pandemic. We met with our leadership team, our department directors, and just had this conversation about coming back, but what does coming back look like? And it's not a one-size-fits-all approach across our workforce. It's really based on functional role and what that role is in service to the community, and then also we do need to take into consideration of individual, individual needs. So as a workforce, we are going to continue to promote hybrid. I know I will continue to, at least one day a week, continue to model that by working from home one day a week to, to demonstrate that this is the culture we want moving forward.
Follow up and say thank you for that answer, right? I think that, and it's Diane as well. It's, it's a huge employer mistake if you're not going to allow for that flexibility. And I understand that if you're fixing sewer lines or you're fixing roads or that, you can't do that at home, but that, that's the whole culture, unless you're only going to have employees above a certain age group. Anybody probably under forty, forty-five is going to say, I want some hybrid portion of it. So I, I'm pleased, and why that was important to me is that we ought to mirror, I think, somewhat the policies of what your employees are doing. So I, I thank you, and I'm hoping Diane, you're the same way. If people can work remotely, it's going to retain your employee staff, I can tell you. I'm finding that in my small business. People, that's, that's, that's an ingredient to being here, so. Thanks.
I, I'd just like to add that I'm working with Mayor Beatty and a group of people who are looking at childcare options, and we're coming back together. My assignment was to talk with businesses about what they're doing and see if we can put together a table for business, the public and private sector to talk about. This is simply focused at childcare, but I, and I've talked to Northwest Natural, I've talked to the Standard, I've talked to Intel. Every single one of those companies are saying they need, they've learned that they have to be flexible. They also, I had a long talk with Catherine Williams from Northwest Natural yesterday, and her message was not only do we have to be flexible with the employees that we have for retention purposes, we have to demonstrate to our recruitment, in, within our recruitment process, that we are flexible and that we, we work to make sure that employees' needs are met, or we're not going to get the employees in the first place. So the, I think that we're, we're in step is what, what I'm saying, and I think that that's an important piece to take into consideration, not only what the public sector is doing, but how does that, how does that look in alignment to the private sector? And I think that we're there. That's, that's what's important.
One thing that I wonder about is, well, not wonder about, just these last couple of weeks. I've, I've been transitioning from pretty much entirely virtual for the last three months to, although I was going into the building at least on Tuesdays. I used to go in to the building three days a week during COVID. But once Omicron hit and the level of contagion was so high, I pulled back from that to try and make sure I was doing my part in not supporting spread. So where this, this heads to is, it's been interesting to experience myself, but also to talk to others about what the transition from entirely virtual to some face-to-face has been. You know, just realizing that we have to, we can't have meetings back-to-back anymore. We have to think about, okay, is there travel time? And making sure it's not just getting to a meeting, but getting back from a meeting to wherever you need to be next. So there's some bumpiness, and for, for some of you, it may be simpler than for others, depending upon how far you have to go for some of these meetings. And I think about that for our staff as well. While they're still navigating, having their kids in school and in after-school activities and how to juggle all of that. So I'm, I'm just soup, I, hybrid's not going to go away, okay? It's wonderful. It's great for telework, but it's also great for our community and for our staff to, to work on that work, home, life integration. I just want to make sure that we ourselves have enough flexibility as well to follow through on that and and make sure that as we, as a board, make a transition, we're not adding more pressure to our staff. Our, it's, it's we have to be very conscious of the fact that our staff is very, very tired, and we really need them to go on vacation and take a break between now and the end of the year. I'm not suggesting we stay virtual for beyond the end of the school year, but I think we, we need to be very mindful, so. I don't know where. So from my standpoint, there's, there's the near term for, for these budget meetings. And I'm trying to think about what do we lose if we only do them virtually? And I haven't been able to think about, I haven't been able to, to enumerate what are we losing versus just a hybrid approach? And then there's the, the longer term of what do we want to aim for for our meetings at some date certain at this point? So I'm just suggesting that we separate the two, the near-term budget meeting set, and then the, they, for everything else, what, what's our goal? What are we aiming for? So I'll just throw that out there and, and see, do we want to just aim for one-size-fits-all for everything, or think about those two differently?
You know, I really think that we are, if we, if I've learned anything through this pandemic, it's the need for flexibility and to, to trust the evolutionary process as we go through this. So I, my, my advice counsel, if you will, would be to, to, to start slowly, move through this and see what works and see what doesn't work. So I, you know, I, I think back on about last July when we were always going yay! And, and we celebrated with all sorts of, you know, new, new, new plans, and that didn't last long. So, and I think that we, we suffer from quick action in this situation. I think that we're better off to evolve. I think that we're better off to evolve and watch what's happening around us as we evolve. Plus, I think it takes some pressure, Tanya, frankly, off of you. And if we set the expectation that our intention is to rely on science, to evolve as appropriate within the structure of what's presented to us and ask for flexibility from our employees as well. But knowing that we, you know, we operate with the full intention to maintain hybrid opportunities and that type of thing, and say the same thing to the public.
So frequently, my job as chair is to throw an option out on the table so that people can react to it and we can move to some next step or closure. So I'm just going to put a recommendation on the floor and we can go from there. How about a recommendation of our budget meetings as enumerated on the single sheet? We continue to execute all of those virtually. And then we aim for transitioning to hybrid at the end of the fiscal year, i.e. the beginning of the next fiscal year. Commissioner Phi, I think you're the only one we haven't heard from or gotten an indication of yet.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Handan. I was thinking about, you know, I know schools are going to be having their masks off. And I think people are going to expect to somewhat get on the path of the old normal, what the new normal looks like. I'm wondering, Tanya, like, is there a plan, sort of a strategic plan, to sort of mobilize the community to put them on that path? Because I think, I feel like we need to have a robust community engagement to let people know things are resuming back to in-person. But I'm also in support of like promoting, like, keep your mask, stay home if you're sick kind of thing. So I'm, I want, I know the community is excited to get back to in-person. So I'm wondering, how do we meet the needs of the people who are, sorry, my kid is joining us in this meeting here? I'm just wondering, like, if we're going to be hybrid, how do we use this moment of excitement of masks are coming off, the pandemic is ending? How do we use this excitement to put people on the path of, like, there's a light at the end of the tunnel, this pandemic is ending, we're going to get back to normal, and that's what the future normal looks like? So I guess in a roundabout, I'm wondering if there's a community engagement of what the hybrid model will look like. And if we don't start this budget meeting, you know, I myself will continue to wear masks because of kids in school and seems like there's always somebody coming down with a COVID or suspect it, and there's stay-home messages coming with the kids. And to be honestly, you know, so I don't know. I'm just, I'm excited about the hybrid model and I'm excited of getting the community back together. But we need to have a plan of how we're going to get that message out to the community to know that our services are resuming back. And then what are the science that we're going to promote? Like encourage people to keep their masks on and things like that. So just if you could speak to that community engagement part. I'm okay if we wait and keep the, I think, right now, our community are okay with this online version and they're used to it. So, and between now and June, it's really three months. We might lose the sort of, you know, the number of turnout we have for online for now if we switch to the hybrid model. So I'm concerned about that, you know, how do we, how do we get the message out? So I'm okay, in short, to keep the same structure that we have for the past few years, online versions, and then come up with a plan to really promote this hybrid model to our community because it's going to have to be aggressive that we're going back to normal ways and define what that normal looks like.
So I'm going to take my best kind of shot at answering because I think there are a few questions in there. So I would encourage the board not to think about going back to normal. We're not going back. We're going forward to living with COVID. As the board received your last COVID update, we are going to have cycles and surges as we move forward. So public health is working on messaging. The messaging is even though the guidance is you can take your mask off, please don't throw your mask away because there may be a time that you may feel more safe to wear masks. There are still settings that masks are going to be required in, such as healthcare and congregate settings. And also, we want to normalize wearing a mask as well. And so I think it is about how we go forward. Relative to community engagement, what's incredibly important is for us to let the community know, I feel, how they can engage. And so being clear in specific, for board meetings or for budget meetings or any community engagement, how the community can engage is, I would say, is even more important than in-person or via a Zoom link. And what we have is really an opportunity to increase engagement as we move forward in a hybrid model because there's opportunity for engagement than in-person or via Zoom or whatever the platform is, which actually helps meet, I'll just say, the busy and complicated lives that each of us hold and our community members hold as well. So we're not going back. We're actually going forward into a new space. And we are going to need to continue to ask for feedback from our community in this new community engagement space that we're all learning together.
For me personally, it's a little hard to get my head around the subject because just last month, I think maybe to this very day, at our work session on Thursday, might have been February 3rd, we heard from our team about what the future might hold. And the one clear takeaway I took from that is that we'll be living more seamlessly with this virus when we go ninety days without a surge that takes down our hospital system. It's not just no surge, right? It's that our hospital system isn't impacted. Yep, people are going to get sick. Yep, some people, hopefully very few, will die, right? Happens every day. Car crashes, heart attacks, cancer, you name it. Even violence, right? So it's not that it's acceptable, it just is. I do still worry about the community members that really can't be vaccinated yet, especially the kids, five and younger or younger than five. It's really hard. So I think we're just going to have to navigate. I think you're right, Ms. Angie. Let's make sure the community knows how to engage. Let's get ourselves set up for hybrid into the future. Let's give our staff members as much lead time for where we're attending and go from there. Go ahead, Commissioner Trace.
You saw me lean forward. You know, I think one thing that we should do is ask, I raised the question about starting times for our meetings. And I think we should, we should ask, we should model this concept and see what works best for everybody. And you start there. I mean, that's a very simple little thing. Well, it's not little. So it's amazing how a half an hour has more meaning at certain times in the day than it does at other times of the day. You know, so can we talk about that as a board?
And I think, I think there's another element to it. And that is, we often find ourselves in a bind about other things going on in the region that we need to respond to and the fact that we only meet one day a week. So I'm not suggesting we're ready for it now, but I want to make sure to plant a seed that at some point, there really needs to be a conversation about the board meeting differently. I know there's often an expression that by three o'clock, some people's brains are just done for the day. You know, where's that cup of coffee to push through? And pushing through doesn't necessarily make for the, for quality conversations and deliberations. So would we be better off to meet multiple days a week? And then cancel as needed or whatever. So.
And some brains aren't even available before nine o'clock.
Yeah, yeah. So the difficulty is, on a Tuesday, if we're going to continue to start our board meeting at ten, then what do we do with just that one hour, right? I mean, the board used to only meet pretty much for a half-day, eight-thirty to noon-ish. And, you know, that certainly limited topics in the public eye. And I applaud all of you for opening that up so that we do our deliberations in public and that we do embrace the full portfolio of services for Washington County and Clean Water Services. You've all embraced that change very, very well, and our community is all the better for it. I just, I just don't know what we gain. So it's just a big question mark in my mind. Am I open to it? Of course. So, sorry to jump in first. Commissioners, what do you think?
I think Commissioner Roger mentioned, I think. I like the idea, our meetings just start at nine. I do. I think with school shiftings and drop-off and things like that, I think, and then it's just, nine is perfect for me, but I don't, and it sounds like it might be perfect for others too. But I would just speak to me and say, I think nine, it's, as a parent with kids in school, nine is perfect time to start our meetings. Just get it over with the school drop-offs and everything that goes with it because you drop kids off, teachers want to update you on yesterday and things. So I vote for nine. Thank you for, Commissioner Trace, for bringing that. Priming me, Commissioner Rogers.
Should we start trying it out after spring break, for example? You know, as of April 1st and see how it goes? Go ahead, Commissioner Trace.
Oh, I, you know, there's a couple, I think we should, but there's a couple of things that we might consider. You talked about the fact that our board meetings start at ten. We could look at changing the start time of those, or we could say that the first hour of the meeting is limited to board and leadership communication and any discussions around that. So, you know, I mean, I wouldn't try to, I wouldn't want to try to push in very many staff reports during that time because we seem to really use that time. And frankly, it generates a lot of discussion among the five of us about issues that sometimes I hadn't thought about. So I appreciate that, I appreciate that time. So I've made two suggestions. One is a recommendation to start at nine, but also to predetermine what the purpose of that first hour is. Or change the board time.
If we wanted to slot anything more in, we could try the committee assignments too. Those tend to go pretty quickly.
Exactly. I was just going to say that.
Yeah, looking, you know, thinking about how things have gone over the last couple of years.
Board members, as you were discussing, I was looking at the rolling agenda and the eight-thirty to ten o'clock slot, really, it is board communication. And Chair, as you indicated, we do try to slide in the committee appointments at that time. So those, if the board moves to nine o'clock, we could just move those or those could be tentative and they could move after the board meeting on the work session if we run up to the ten o'clock boundary.
Logistically, there are certain things that are in our charter and other things are in our adopted rules and procedures. Do we know what we have to change in order to at least try something like this for three-plus months?
I see Clerk Moss with his camera on, so he's ready to answer that, I believe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So in the rules of procedure, you are, your work sessions do say that you start at eight-thirty. So in order to move that start time to nine, you would have to amend your rules of procedure to allow for that, which you can do at any meeting at any time. So I would defer to Mr. Carr to bring those changes before we put something in place. But certainly, we can do that. We would just need a little bit lead time to get our documents in order.
Kevin's right.
Well, I know I'm game for that proposal. Gentlemen, what do you think? Commissioner Rogers, you're for it? Commissioner Willie? Still shoulder shrug or?
I don't, I don't have a problem with doing that. I don't want to. I think, though, if we push stuff to after a board meeting or later in the afternoon, I think that probably causes Nafisa as much issue as it does the eight-thirty or nine o'clock. So I think we need to be a little considerate that we are removing thirty minutes from our window and make sure that we don't cause problems at the end of the day. I also, just like you said, Catherine, we all have only as much brain absorption power. And once we get later into the afternoon and we get to the four o'clock hour or beyond, that causes issues as well. So I don't want to make this any harder. I think if this will help Nafisa in what she's got going in the morning, I'm more than willing to say, yep, nine o'clock's okay with me because I don't have anything to do. Maybe I sleep in an extra half hour. I don't know. But we just need to be aware that there's something on the other side too that may cause issues.
Well, I saw Commissioner Rogers give a thumbs up as well. So it sounds like the board is requesting that there be a modification to the rules and procedure to enable us to change our Tuesday start times to nine o'clock. And go with the agenda setting that's already been practiced and in place.
And we'll make that change, to clarify, we'll make that change after spring break. And we'll make that change, to clarify, we'll make that change after spring break.
Consistent with my personal philosophy in life, that the only decision I, I've ever made that I can't change is being a mother. I think that we can, we can look at this as, uh, an opportunity to you try this out. And if it doesn't work, we can change it again. So, you know, I, this isn't, just because it needs a procedural change, I don't think, um, Tom Carr has lots of time. So I'm sure we, he can get this done.
Well, I'm not going to speak for our county council, that's for sure.
We'd certainly get it done. We'll probably bring it forward for consent on the fifteenth. Effective after spring break.
I would ask that we have a communication effort to our public.
Is there, so are we thumbs up on the board calendar or the budget calendar moving forward? Commissioner Rogers, sorry, I missed your, okay. Alrighty. Ms. Angie, do you need anything more for, from us on that topic? Okay. Well, the next topic, uh, we have an outside speaker. Do we need to or want to just take a break here so that we reconvene at ten o'clock? Or what are the wishes of the commission? And, and Ms. Angie?
Staffer can move forward, um, or yeah, move forward. I see right saying a yes. And the outside speaker, um, Commissioner Phi was planning to introduce.
I, I just don't know if our outside speakers are here. So sorry for being imprecise. I should have been much more precise. Are outside speakers available at this time?
Yes, yes, they are. Sorry.
Terrific. Thank you so much, folks. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Angie and Commissioner Phi.
Right, Ms. Angie. Turn it over to me. Uh, thank you, um, Tanya. Hello, everyone. I see everyone is here. So I'll just do a formal, um, quick introduction with, for Dr. Sabata and the team from the Portland State University. Dr. Marissa Sabata, Associate Professor of Land Use Planning and Director of Homelessness Research and Action Collaborative, Portland State University. As an educator, scholar, and a planner, Dr. Sabata is committed to achieving spatially based social justice by preparing planners to act in the face of the uncertainty and inequitable future we face. She believes how we use lands, uh, how we use land reflects our social and cultural values. Next speaker that we have today from Portland State University is Todd Ferry. Senior Research Associate and Faculty Fellow, Center for Public Interest Design at Portland State University. Todd's current work investigates how new architecture pathology can support traditionally underserved communities through radically participatory processes and seek to develop innovative tools and models of engagement to aid in this effort. His primary focus area includes housing insecurity and homelessness, mobile placemaking and mobile urbanism, and innovative approaches to sustainable design. Welcome, Todd. And next speaker from Portland State is Dr. Craig Townley, Associate Professor of Community Psychology, Portland State University, and a co-founder, Homelessness Research and Action Collaborative at Portland State University. Dr. Townley's research examines community inclusion and supportive housing of individuals experiencing serious mental illness and homelessness. The Portland State University's Homelessness Research and Action Collaborative, acronym HRAC, team conducted a multi-layered study that engaged a range of stakeholders, including villagers, village managers, and support specialists, village designers and architects, and neighbors. I'm looking forward to learning more from our experts this morning on the best practices for creating, for the creation of more impactful and equitable village practices that can also inform a range of other approaches to alternative shelter. Welcome, team, and Dr. Sabata and everyone. And I'm really looking forward to your discussions and, uh, I turn the mic over to you.
Thank you, Commissioner Phi. That was a truly wonderful introduction and you've done a lot of the early lifting for me. Uh, thank you for inviting us to be here today. And thank you Chair Harrington for, uh, creating space on the calendar for us as well. Um, I am Dr. Sabata and I run the Homelessness Research and Action Collaborative. And as Commissioner Phi said, today we're going to be presenting some of our findings around this research project that Meyer Memorial Trust funded us to look at six of the villages in the Portland region to understand what was working, what wasn't working, to develop a how-to guide for how to go about making villages in the way that we understand is going to be most effective for supporting people experiencing homelessness. Next slide, please, Todd. So, um, today we're going to be talking about, I want to start with kind of contextualizing why villages matter, where they matter, and how they can help. I think that y'all are really appreciating the complexity of addressing homelessness, both as a solution to homelessness and responding to homelessness. So I'm going to set a little bit of the framework and then Todd, Greg, and I will talk about some of the specific findings within our Pod Village model. And then we'll open it up to questions. Todd, next slide, please. All right. So first, I just want to commend y'all. I know that this has been a huge learning curve and uplift over the past few years to understand and learn about homelessness. Obviously, I know that particularly in Washington County, um, there has been some rapid growth, particularly the people you're seeing on the street. And I'm sure that, uh, all of y'all, I like to say that everyone's really tired of the talking point about housing solves homelessness because we still see homelessness. I do want to emphasize that that is actually the solution when we're thinking about putting, um, housing first and available to people. That is where we see their best opportunity to be able to engage in services, manage, uh, mental health care, substance use disorder, to really be able to stabilize and move forward. That model is best done in what is called a housing first model, which is where you're in inviting people to move in and not requiring them to participate in services. Why does this matter for a general framing and thinking about, um, village models as a response? Well, I think it helps contextualize some of our findings and what we've been finding actually is quite effective in the village model. When you tell, hear about village models and similarly with, uh, motels, there would have been called alternative shelter responses. And so usually in the homelessness system, if you say shelter, people are thinking about the congregate shelters where people might all be sleeping in the same room, or there might be bunk beds in certain rooms. Domestic violence shelters are looking, look a little bit different. But in general, we're talking about congregate shelter. Shelter is hard to run, y'all. It is really hard to run. So we don't want to pick on the people who are already running shelter. Uh, there were a lot of challenges in running it. It's meant to be temporary, but as we know, it has grown in time in which people are having to access it. And so you've got a lot of people who are really experiencing the lowest point in their life, crammed inside into big rooms, um, having to manage safety concerns. Some people have experienced trauma with shelter. Most shelter has some level of barriers, meaning like you can't go in with your pets. You may not be able to go in with belongings or a lot of belongings. For some family shelters, until recently, it was seen as a mom and her kids. So where was a dad and his kid supposed to go? Couples can't stay together, um, until recently. So again, there's a lot of reasons why people aren't comfortable going into shelter or shelter won't work with them. And that's where we've seen the emergency, I mean, the, the emergence of Pod Villages as an alternative form of shelter. Um, and that would also be an example, like I said, with the motels. I think y'all have a project turnkey motel in Washington County. And so, um, so we're thinking about how do we position some alternative shelter to support people while they're waiting for housing. So that's kind of the general framing. I'm going to hand it over to Todd to get into some of the details about what we found.
Thank you, Dr. Zapata. And, uh, would it be possible to, uh, give me hosting ability so I can advance slides? Looks like maybe no. All right.
So Todd, this is Clerk Boss. So our IT side is, is sharing the screen with your PowerPoint. So you just say next slide, they will move it forward for you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, well, it's nice to be here with you all. Uh, I'm Todd Ferry. And, uh, before we get into the actual, uh, research, for a little bit of context, I just want to share a little bit about villages as they exist in Portland and my role in it. Beginning, uh, here, in 2016, I was invited to be part of a group called the Village Coalition, which wanted to advocate for, uh, the creation of villages in the area. Dignity Village is a self-governed village in Portland that's existed since 2000. But there haven't, there hadn't been many until that point. So following the city-state of emergency, there was a group advocating for villages uh, over other, uh, over other models. So next. So with students and faculty, we began to explore the village model on the spectrum of, uh, us, uh, somewhere between unsheltered and, uh, permanent housing and really understanding it from, um, from the perspective of it's a typology of tiny, uh, of individual non-congregate units with shared common facilities, with some sort of agreements around, uh, community, uh, behavior. And then also some sort of agency over, over what happens, uh, there. Next. So there was a lot to explore in terms of simply looking at, uh, it as its efficiencies, both spatially and cost-wise. Next. But really, the village model seemed most promising, um, in terms of innovative land use. Because, uh, obviously, we, we don't want to take land away from, uh, spots that could be permanent housing, but we do want to address homelessness. Uh, some examples here, Hazel Nut Grove, which is a self-governed village in, in Portland, is located on a strip of ODOT land where, where nothing else could be built. The first Kent Women's Village, um, was located on a, on a site that was waiting for funding. While that was being procured, there were a couple of years period where it wasn't being used. So as a pilot project, uh, it was able to take, take place there. And Agape Village is a more recent village, uh, that's on the site, uh, on church-owned property at the base of Kelly Butte and, and wouldn't be appropriate for, for building. Next. So, uh, in, involved in this work through my role at PSU and the Center for Public Interest Design, I was, uh, involved in the creation of several villages, such as the Kent Women's Village, which brought together a whole lot of stakeholders and became the first city-sponsored village in the region and had a lot of, uh, architects and others involved. And this is a managed village by Catholic Charities. Next. The next one was the Clackamas County Veterans Village, also, uh, an innovation where the, the county, uh, funds the village. It's managed by Do Good Multnomah. Next. Agape Village, while it's not city-sponsored, it's city sanctioned and is run on, uh, donations and is a hybrid model of a, of a kind of, not self-governed, but maybe co-governed with management. Next. And to get a little bit more into what these look like and cost and, and, and how they come to be, I'll share a little bit about Kent Women's Village, we call 2.0. The next slide. The first Kent Women's Village took, uh, was cited on this land. And as I mentioned, this was always cited for future affordable housing, but as a pilot project with, uh, always intended to be, uh, temporary. And because villages are made out of components that can be moved and are modular, then a, at the end of the pilot project period, it was deemed successful enough to continue. And so, next slide, it was moved over to, to this site. Not, not ideal in terms of its location, but it's on, uh, Bureau of Environmental Services land. Nothing else could be built there. And it was able to take advantage of the social infrastructure that had been built, uh, with the neighborhood of Kenton that was there. Next. In order to create this village, uh, learning from the pilot period, these are the partners who were involved. Catholic Charities would continue to manage the village. And, uh, the rest of the folks you see here were involved in working with a range of collaborators on the design and construction components. Next. We also, uh, needed, uh, we were moving from a village of fourteen pods to twenty. And so, uh, and we wanted to improve the pods, move to electricity, move to, uh, incorporated heating into each of the pods. And so we invited the construction community to contribute and, and we had overwhelming response. We had twenty-one teams who wanted to sign up and we needed less than, than twenty pods because a few were continuing. And these are, uh, these are the folks who contributed. Next. What we, we provided three designs, some sort of standardization, but allowed the, uh, construction teams to each, each customize it in a way that was able to take advantage of their expertise or maybe materials that were left over from other jobs that they had. And each of these pods was, was built and donated by the construction teams. You can kind of cycle through the next few, uh, pods. The first, this was Scott Edwards Architects Design. The next pod, in the next slides, you'll see was designed, uh, by my students and I, the PSU School of Architecture, pop-up pod. Next. On the interior, you'll, you'll see how there's electricity that's integrated and, and radiant heating panels. Next. And this was a project by SRG Partnership called the Safe Pod. Next. So there's, there's some standardization. There was some range. Next. And then also we designed the, the common facility and, uh, trying to learn from what works there. As you can, uh, see, there is a kitchen, there is a gathering space, there's a laundry room, three bathrooms with showers. Next. And this was designed out of, uh, shipping containers, uh, for, for a number of reasons. But here you can see it being installed. Next. All right. So that gives you a little bit of sense of, uh, of the process and the individual components. The cost of this village, the land was provided by BES. The estimated cost, uh, total was around eight, maybe eight hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, all, all said and done, about half of that was, was pro bono or waived through services. A huge component was all the pods that were, uh, were built and contributed by the construction companies and other pieces. So the actual cost, uh, was around a little over $400,000. Now that's capital costs and doesn't include ongoing operations or management from Catholic charities or otherwise, but should give you a sense of, uh, of a cost. The most recent, uh, more recent villages have been closer to a million dollars or a little bit over. But, uh, that gives you, uh, some perspective. Next. This, this project, uh, took about seven months from, uh, from the initial design phase through the action, through, um, people moving in. Next. St. John's Village is the most recent village that just opened last year with some standardization. And, uh, there's been a lot of exchange between villages as they're, uh, as each one grows, kind of learning from the last. And so they, they utilize the, the pop-up pod. And now they have incorporated radiant heated panels and lighting, which is becoming standardized in more recent villages. Next. So, um, villages are no longer that uncommon. They're becoming increasingly, uh, common on the, on the, the suite of options that nonprofits, that, uh, governments are using for addressing homelessness. And it's happening all over the country. And so, um, we were, uh, and, and next slide, uh, there's a lot that's been done since the pandemic in various forms that, that share aspects of the village model. They may call themselves a village and, um, and so, uh, next. I'll hand it over to Greg to talk, uh, about how we wanted to go through, uh, the process of trying to understand these villages. And, uh, do they work and for whom and what can we learn from them?
Thanks, Todd, for setting the stage. Uh, so as Todd mentioned, there's a lot of enthusiasm in Oregon and other parts of the nation around the village model. There's not much systematic research on how they work for residents, who they serve, and how they impact neighborhoods. To help fill this gap, we conducted mixed methods research, so both quantitative surveys and qualitative interviews across six villages and their neighborhoods in the Portland metropolitan area. And these villages were St. John's Village, Kenton Women's Village, Hazel Nut Grove, Dignity Village, Agape Village, and Clackamas Veterans Village. Um, as Dr. Zapata noted, this work was funded by the Meyer Memorial Trust. Collectively in this research, and you can see in the slide, we conducted surveys and interviews with forty-two villagers to ask questions about village governance structure, onsite services and pod design, and to understand the impact of the village on their sense of community, their safety, their health behaviors, food security, transportation, and social support. their safety, their health behaviors, food security, transportation and social support. We also interviewed nine village staff about the number of transitions to permanent housing, employment outcomes and health service utilization, and seven designers and six village creators and builders about the sighting process and development of each village. We interviewed 16, 16 neighbors of villages to understand their attitudes toward and experiences with the villages, with a focus on those who shifted from opposing to supporting the village or the reverse. And we also conducted a large community wide survey with 2,065 Portlanders asking about a variety of housing and service options, including villages. And we found that 436 of these individuals who took the survey lived near a village and Drs. Zapata will go over this information more in her section. My next slide please. For this part of the presentation, I'll focus primarily on the villagers' experiences and share just a few highlights from our surveys and interviews with them. Of the 42 villagers we interviewed, 12 were female, 30 were male, seven identified as people of color and 35 as white. And the average time of the village was 1.5 years. Clearly, the current village models primarily serve white community members, specifically white men. And this disparity is reflected in our research with only 17% of the villagers we interviewed identifying as black indigenous or other people of color. Despite the most recent point in time count from Multnomah County, reporting that 40% of those who were unsheltered were people of color. Methodologically, this could reflect some self selection. We offered the survey to anyone who wanted to take it and not everyone chose to participate. But these numbers are in line with what village managers and staff told us about the racial makeup of the villages. That across villages, villagers are primarily white and primarily men. Why is this? Is the village model viable or appropriate for communities of color? This is something we hope to learn about in our work. And we did find that villagers who were black indigenous or other people of color reported lower levels of belonging and acceptance within their villages compared to white villagers. Current villages need to institute more mechanisms to support people of color. And we also know that villages are on the horizon that are designed by and for people of color. For example, Liquida Lanford's Afro Village. Next slide please. One important part of this work was talking with the villagers about what they liked about their pods, their villages and neighborhoods, what they didn't like, what they wanted to see improved. We did, we asked a variety of questions, including survey questions adapted from established housing and neighborhood measures used in supported housing research. These questions are asked on a scale of one to five. People can say if they strongly disagree, ranging to all the way to strongly agree about these questions. And here you can see the average scores for each of these scales. And I'll talk about what they measured. So pod quality includes questions like, I have enough space in my pod. My pod is usually a comfortable temperature. Village social climate includes questions about social cohesion and sense of community at the villages. And with questions like, I feel like part of the village, like I belong here. I feel safe in the village. The village resident scale asked questions about relationships with other villagers, such as I can count on a villager for help when I need it. And other villagers complain about me or my pod. Neighborhood quality includes items like there are nice parks in my neighborhood. I've got sidewalks in my neighborhood. And areas that brought this score down relative to other scales were in terms of noise, traffic and air quality that villagers noted. And then finally, the neighborhood social climate is similar to village social climate, but with more questions about social interactions and sense of belonging in the broader neighborhood. You see it's a bit lower than the village social climate, which makes sense given the greater proximity and ability to build sense of community inside the village compared to outside the village. Next slide please. Overall, villagers were highly satisfied with their pods and satisfied with their neighborhoods and villages. Interestingly, on the previous slide, village scores were higher than neighborhood scores. Yet here you see a lower satisfaction score for the village. We think this likely reflects the village is more central to people's lives. They're reflecting on it more closely and maybe more critical about it because it is more important to them or more, a more active part of their day to day existence than the broader neighborhood. Eighty-five particip- eighty-five, eighty-five percent of participants reported their current living situation is better than their previous living situation. And when asked how long they want to live in the village on a scale of one to five, with one being no longer than necessary and five being as long as possible, the average score is right in the middle at around 3.32. And when we look at the extremes, that eight participants who said they wanted to live in the village is no longer than necessary, talked some about negative experiences like conflict with villagers or frustration with village rules. But others discussed wanting their own apartment or, or home and wanting to transition out to a permanent spot. And also wanting to be able to allow the village, their spot in the village to open up to someone else who may need it more. The 14 participants who said they wanted to live in the village as long as possible liked the social support of other villagers. They felt comfort and contentment in the village. And they expressed wanting to work on themselves and build a routine before transitioning to permanent housing. Next slide please. We're really interested in how villages help people access services and meet their basic needs. In terms of transportation access and walkability, 93% of the sample indicated living close to a bus, max or streetcar line, which is great for access to other parts of the city, getting the services, appointments or work. 69% of participants, participants said they could walk to stores and services from their homes. In some cases, it's a long walk or involved walking uphill. So certainly a challenge for people with mobility issues. And there were six people we spoke with who relied on mobility aids such as walkers, canes or wheelchairs. We also were interested in how villages may help people meet their basic needs for food. We used the six item food security survey from the US Department of Agriculture, which asked questions about food access in the last 30 days, such as how often could you not afford to eat balanced meals in the last 30 days? And in the last 30 days, were you ever hungry but didn't eat because there wasn't enough money for food? Based on these questions, just over half, just under half of the villagers we surveyed were food insecure, so 45.2%. And of the entire sample, 33% of participants ranked as very low food security, suggesting that while villages are helping some individuals meet their basic needs for food, there's still certainly work to do to ensure that everyone has access to food. Next slide please. Finally, we also asked about other aspects of health and well being. We asked people how satisfied they are with their lives on a scale of one terrible to seven delighted. And the average score was a 4.71, which indicates mixed to mostly satisfied. Roughly half of participants had seen a healthcare provider in the past, past month. And this could be for primary care visit or behavioral health appointment. And three quarters of the sample had coverage from the Oregon Health Plan, which is encouraging in terms of being able to get needed health services covered by insurance. But individuals did note other barriers to receiving healthcare access that should be a focus, a focal point for villagers moving forward. Now, in addition to surveys, we also conducted open ended interviews where villagers could talk more in depth about their experiences and really tell us anything they wanted to talk about. Next slide please. We used thematic coding and content analysis to analyze qualitative data to help us understand people's stories. And I'll just report on two thematic areas here. The first being around village features. First and foremost, villagers who lived in villages that didn't have electricity and plumbing, hope to see those utilities out added soon. There were also some issues with the number of bathrooms and distance between bathrooms and pods, illustrated by a couple quotes here. Next slide please. There's only three bathrooms and sometimes there's 20 women in there. It's difficult to hold it if you have to go that bad. Next. That is inside accessibility to bathrooms because there's 60 yards. That's too far. And some of these guys have bladder issues. And these quotes illustrate it's very important to think about age demographics and mobility needs in villages and to understand how they may differ from the general population. And so certainly important to consider when, when designing the sites. Next slide please. Another village feature that people commonly discuss was the common area. Some villages do have common areas and villagers were interested in making those areas bigger. At other villages that did not have common areas, villagers were interested in a place to socialize, something to do outside the pod. And next slide please. This quote helps to illustrate that. I think the pods are a good size. I mean, all you really need is a bed and a place to keep your stuff. I think if we had a bigger common areas, because you don't always just want to be in your room. It's like you want to get out and do something. So if they had a common area where they had like maybe games or TVs or something like that, just where you can interact with others. Next slide. The second thematic area that I'll report here related to governance, that is how villages run. Some are managed by a nonprofit church or other organization and others are run by the villagers themselves. Four out of the six villages we surveyed were managed by the city, county and/or another nonprofit organization, while two were self governed. Managed villages had varying opportunities for residents to voice concerns. But at the end of the day, many decisions are made by management, as reflected by this quote. Next please. They'll ask you your opinion. They'll take that into consideration, but then they'll do it whatever they think is best. Next please. Another villager said, we do have our, our say and we're allowed to speak for ourselves and what we think. But when it comes down to it, it's mainly up to the staff and the facilities. On the other hand, at self governed villages, next slide. The vast majority of residents said that residents meet and discuss decisions and either reach consensus or vote. At self governed villages, there was a greater sense of community and a sense that villagers look out for each other. Next please. One villager said, knowing that there's an issue, there's a whole community of people that will help solve it. Helps me feel safe. Next. The sense that if anything gets really crazy, the community is pretty good at breaking it up and trying to de escalate. The communal watching, I guess, as soon as there's an external threat, it's immediate. We're a super organism and we've got each other's backs. So a variety of opinions about governance structure at villages. This concludes the section of our presentation on the villager experiences. And I'll now turn it over to Dr. Zapata, who will talk about the surrounding neighborhoods.
Hello. Well, as a part of our work, we wanted to understand what neighbors thought about the villages and villagers. So motivation was two part. One was that we had, of course, met across time, people who had changed their mind about villages and people who were more importantly, strong village advocates. And so you could see people actually going to other neighborhoods to make arguments for why a village should be cited there. On the flip side, of course, we see a lot of neighbors standing up and saying, no, we don't want a village. Or if we are going to accept a village, it's under a particular set of circumstances. And we must have a good neighbor agreement. Indeed, this public pushback with citing villages and neighborhoods is so extreme that if you're aware, the Commissioner Dan Ryan in the city of Portland announced many months ago, the goal of citing six villages. We have yet to actually open a village in the city of Portland based on that. And in large part because of neighborhood pushback, right? And so if you're not going to have the support of neighbors, what does that mean for your work going forward? I think it's really important to consider this in two ways. One is that we face a fundamental question around whether neighbors should have a right to determine who lives in their neighborhood. And while this isn't raised, as far as I understand legally, to the level of a discriminatory act, right? At the end of the day, I don't get to pick who the person is moving into the house next to me or into the apartment next to me. Yet neighbors really believe that they have a right to determine if there is a village in their neighborhood. And so thinking about what is promoted by accommodating neighbors. At the same time, the neighbors are having an impact. And so is there a way to work with people to help facilitate a village process? I think this underscores what has been supposedly one of the biggest pluses of villages was that they were supposed to be able to be cited and opened quickly. But as you get into these long timeframes, it raises a question of when does a village make sense? And neighbors can become key in that, both in positive and negative ways. Next slide please. And so one of the, we did this survey of 2,000 people in the Portland area. Overall, we were really excited to see that people know what the solution to homelessness is. They know that it is housing and a combination of housing and services. They understand fundamentally the main driver of homelessness being affordable housing. And they are involved in their villages. One of the other big things that came out is that in terms of the top concerns, several of the top concerns about a village, once the village had come into the neighborhood and opened, we saw a lot of those concerns diminish over time. Next slide please. I think this was really a great quote that kind of summarized that particular feeling around people being very concerned, very worked up, very upset, and then realizing, oh, actually, the village opened and it's fine. We don't care. Concerns around, particularly around the behavior of people living in the village dropped from being in the upper 40s to being in the low 20s after people had moved in. Now, I do want to note that part of that might be tied to the fact that these are, I mean, they're not high barrier, but they're not super low barrier shelter spaces either. And so, right, there is a consideration of who is allowed to access the village and who is not. But again, people were very worked up, very concerned, and then that dissipated quite rapidly. Next slide please. Oh, sorry, go back. Sorry, IT. We deleted a bunch of our slides. I'm like, oh wait, there's supposed to be another slide. No, there's not. I just keep talking on this one. And so I think that that just really, again, the other thing that was really interesting was the number of people who took our survey, who lived near a village, who had no idea the village was coming in or had opened until well after the fact. And that was about 50% of our respondents didn't even know about the village. And so, again, you're hearing from a set of very angry, angry and frustrated people. But at the end of the day, are there real consequences to neighbors, neighborhoods and so forth? Not as much as you might expect there to be. In fact, when we had asked people about their concerns about the village, after the village had opened, about 30% of people actually said they were most concerned about the villagers, their safety, their well being, their transition into housing, and not about any of the impacts of villagers on, on the neighborhood. As I mentioned, we did see the emergence of village proponents, advocates who will go into neighborhoods, people supportive and trying to be ambassadors to other neighborhoods. We've also seen the creation of welcoming villages. So in the neighborhood of St. John's in Portland, there's St. John's welcomes the village. And that is a group that has continued to work and support the village as it has opened. The other thing that came up in terms of education and outreach was that despite feeling like everyone had to know about the village, and as I said earlier, a number of people did not know about the village, but they actually got our survey. Right? And so there's obviously some untapped flows of information that could be used to educate people about the village and work with them. And so we do think that, you know, getting the news out early, a number of people had heard about the village via kind of leaked information on social media. I live in St. John's along with Dr. Townley. And of course, you know, our St. John's, not official neighborhood association, Facebook page broke the news and it was scandalous and trying to control that as much as possible, as well as just talking with neighbors and educating them about what a village can be and what it can do. Particularly in light of the decisions to not move camps during COVID. A lot of times people are imagining the most extreme informal settlements that you can imagine. And so, you know, some of those places people are really living in with a large amount of garbage, accumulation of objects, things that have been dumped by house people. And so really making the case for like, this is what a village can look like, who it is meant to serve and what it is meant to do. So yeah, I'll answer any more questions about the, the neighbors later. And I hand it back over to Todd.
Thank you, Dr. Zapata. So we will be sharing a little bit about the outcome. Next month, we'll be releasing a, the findings of our research and a how to guide. And so we'll be sharing a little bit about the types of information that will be in there, but by no means comprehensive of what will be in the final guide. One note is that within this best practices, we, we were leaning on what we heard from people with lived experience at villages, designing villages and, and working in villages. And so all six villages we studied used sleepy pods as the individual units. But there are certainly nationally others villages that use different types of units, as you see here. Next slide. Each one has its own consideration in terms of cost for footage, labor, mobility and utilities. But we will stick to, but we're sticking to what we've learned based on what we studied, which is the pods. So next. In terms of why pods and why they are the way they are, we know one thing is that they, they're not part of a traditional building code, which can be beneficial for a program like this, but they're really designed around mobility. And so their dimensions have everything to do with being able to be lifted by a standard forklift or crane moved on a flatbed truck without being an oversized load and being able to fit under bridges. And so dimensions tend to be about eight and a half feet wide, a little over 12 feet and, and under 10 and a half feet total. Once on the back, once on a flatbed truck. And so, you know, some things that we were suggesting is being able to maintain a minimum interior is seven feet in each dimension for flexibility in terms of how these are. These are fitting into the building fabric because that allows them to be considered anything from a detached bedroom to, to a pod depending on the path forward. Next. Next slide please. We learned that there's a, a strong preference for pods that, that break a box, which probably isn't too surprising. Particularly, a lot of folks experiencing homelessness have had really negative experience through different forms of institutionalization. And that's triggered a lot by forms that are very boxy. So those that, that formally start to break that up are strongly preferred. Next. In terms of what you see on the left of the St. John's Village, really standardized pods versus those on the right that you see at the Kent Women's Village. There's not too much difference in satisfaction with pod. What made much more of a difference was the ability to, to customize the interior. And so what you're seeing at the bottom of the screen are different layouts of the pop up pod used. screen are different layouts of the pop-up pod used at the St. John's Village. And so maintaining some flexibility for the individual villager living there to be able to customize it to their needs makes a big difference on their perception of it. Next. There's often a question of how many villagers should be at a village, and there's different ways to consider it. The answer that comes back for several reasons is usually 20 to 30. And I'll talk a little bit about that. But one consideration is going to be based on what can fit at a given site. The parameters around how many pods can be fit, it can be fit on a given site have to do with things like spacing. So about six feet between pods, and then 10 feet between the egress path of pods is considered the tightest that we can really get, that's been developed in Portland. Next. But so the actual, how you actually fit the units and the common facility and access and other things onsite will be a big determinant, but also just what's going to make the most sense socially. And so across the board, we really heard 20 to 30 people is the ideal number for villages, from staff and managers of villages in terms of maintaining relationships and being able to fully support villagers. And it's self-governed villages like Hazenah Grove, 20 to 30 was the ideal number for things like workshops, when they are taking care of themselves. And what's the appropriate amount of people, given the amount of time people have to put in without being overly burdened or understaffed. Next. In terms of the design guidelines, we'll certainly be wanting to think about proximity to common facilities and particularly bathrooms. And as Dr. Townley mentioned, really thinking about the group that's being served, and how can the design be arranged in such a way that there's either multiple bathrooms, or we're really drastically reducing the distance between pods and facility. Next. Site layout played a role in terms of perceptions around feeling too close to neighbors or otherwise, and more organic forms and non-gridded layouts had better results in terms of how villagers felt around, do I feel too close to my neighbor, and satisfaction of the village. Next. Because villages are, the components of them are really mobile, right? The pods can be moved into place, the common facility, as you saw with the shipping container unit in Kenton are prefabricated. They all have the ability to potentially move sites. And so often, the landscaping and other elements are overlooked at these villages, but they can have a major impact. And they can actually be thought of as modular too, even if a village is only planned temporarily. Next. It's important to remember that people living at villages rely on their pod individually, but they're outside is part of their living room. They're moving to and from the kitchen to the bathroom constantly. So maintaining privacy is really important. There are a lot of visitors to village, whether it's friends of the villagers, or it's service providers, or people coming with donations. And so thinking carefully about hard and soft thresholds to ensure privacy between the private areas and public spaces is important. And we provide some guidelines around that. Next. Dr. Townley spoke a little bit about some of the management versus self-governance components, but one key piece that is just worth remembering, whether it's self-governed or managed, building in opportunities for voice makes all the difference in the world. And so, for example, a managed village that has a community council, so villagers who are elected and help to make decisions and gather conversations around certain elements, if not the large elements, things like, in this case, should we have chickens at the village? And should we have a bocce court or something else? The ability to make those decisions in some agency over the surrounding made a huge difference in terms of satisfaction. And so really thinking about making those types of things very clear, but then also building in opportunities for voice and having agency over the actual physical and social aspects of a village. Next. Some, the next few slides, we discussing some unexplored opportunities of villages that seem to be a good next step for how we might be thinking about villages. And one of them is designing for emergency situations. And so there's a lot of similarities between a village as a typology and those that might be created in an emergency response such as an earthquake. And so there is probably a lot of opportunity to explore both funding and the investment and infrastructure that might be put into a village to serve people now while also serving a larger group of people in the event of an emergency. And it's worth noting that Dignity Village in Hazenah Grove, self-governed villages already do this. So in the event of extreme heat or extreme cold, they take on extra villagers and provide a space for them in those times. Next. Designing to support family health, while villages are not likely going to be the right typology to support families, whole families with children, 20% of the villagers interviewed did have children under the age of 18, not living with them, but acknowledging that and designing villages that could support family health and allow for really meaningful and safe visits and time at the village from children could go a long way to supporting those families. Next. On-site micro enterprise was a desire expressed by a lot of villagers and was being explored in different ways by those that self-governed villages. And so it's a real missed opportunity at so far at the villages that have been invested in. So something that could be considered in the future to support community life there. Next. Asset-based or identity-based design, and when it comes to villages, there's important work being done and explored around marginalized communities and creating safe spaces and villages around those identities. But there's also a lot of interest in thinking about not leading from a deficit perspective of creating a village from shared commonalities of poverty or experiencing homelessness, but rather from shared interests. And from our interviews, the most exciting options for villagers were to be part of a village that was organized around farming and gardening, or one that was designed around art and music. So really thinking about what is the programming there? And is it, can it really do more to support the lives of the people there? Next. Often villages are pitted against permanent housing. And we know that permanent housing is the solution to homelessness, but there's often steps to get there. So could we start to think about villages as a step toward affordable housing? One example here is that the first Kent Women's Village was on a site that would later become the village you see on the right, which is Argyle Gardens by Holst Architecture, that's run by Transition Projects and is affordable housing. While these projects worked separately, other than organizing around dates for who could be on the site, when, you could imagine where investment and infrastructure that is, that's invested in a village could actually help to promote, to subsidize, to lead to permanent housing. Next. One area along these lines by our friends at the Afro Village and Liquida Lanford and her group are looking at is looking at housing as, in a long-term plan around villages. So this proposal, if you follow the track on the bottom, the phasing acknowledges that the most expensive cost of a village is usually the common facility and the associated infrastructure. So what if the village began with that common facility as a single or multifamily house with people living in the bedrooms while pods are being developed around it? Support a right number of people for a community. And then after a given period of time for this temporary village, the transfer of that land and that housing, then going to black collaborative ownership is something that we're excited to explore. Next. And finally, in this work, in our research and in this process, we really want to emphasize that villagers are experts at this point. They're experts on villages, and we've learned immeasurably from them in this and in my work certainly. And so not just thinking about them as people to consult, but in terms of bringing them in as trusted and paid advisors on any team is going to lead to much better outcomes and better results. So we want to encourage that on any project going forward. Next. And now we will open it up to any questions or comments you might have. Thank you.
Commissioners, Commissioner Phi, go ahead first.
I was just going to say thank you for that great presentation. And just for a second on our end, to pause for a minute and to turn it back to Tanya to sort of give a background of the memo that was sent to our board of commissioners, and then tie it together. And then we'll go into questions to our presenters.
Thank you, Commissioner Phi. The board has been sent a memo relative to alternative shelters and where we are in the process. I do want to just refresh our memory and also for our friends, our presenters on this presentation, discussion, just last year, Washington County only had 44 year-round shelter beds. And so we are really in the process of scaling up all of our shelter options, which this is an option that our housing team is committed to be examining. Within our SHS plan, we are committed to 250 options for community members. And as we work through the question and answers, I have asked Josh Kreitz, our Assistant Director of Housing, to be here in case there's questions on the memo and what was included in the memo as it relates to this presentation. So thanks for being here, Josh.
Thank you so much, Tanya. And I think I'll turn it back to you, Chair Hampton, to facilitate the question section of it.
Alrighty, commissioners, there you have it. Would anyone like to ask any questions or make any comments? Go ahead, Vice Chair Willie.
I do have a variety of questions, because this is, I mean, I'm certainly aware of the villages. So I appreciate the survey work that you did on those. That was very interesting. The question I guess I have initially is, and if we look, I think specifically in the Portland area, there are a lot of blue tents. And I don't have a sense for numbers, or how many people who live in those, I guess, those little, what I would call little tent villages. How many of them really, if they had a place available like you're suggesting, how many of them would actually take that opportunity and transition from living basically on the street into a village environment?
So I'll take a little bit of this question and then see if Todd has additional thoughts. Every village that has been opened has filled quickly, and there's a waiting list to get in them. Now, I think one thing to consider is the scale, right? And so villages, and from the research, villages should only be up to a certain size. And I think we're saying 25 to 30 people in a village, right? And so that's not going to be that many people who can exit even if they wanted to. And you would have to build a lot of villages to accommodate everyone. So I think it's kind of a both and, right? There would be people who would leave, there's not going to be enough for them. And there are going to be people, particularly when you get into some of these good neighbor agreements, or levels of barriers and expectations, who aren't going to be well-served in a village, right? And so if you're saying no drugs or alcohol in a village, right? Well, I don't live with that rule in my house. Like, I would be pretty grumpy if someone was like, you can't have your wine. But in a very serious way, people who are managing those disorders may not really have a choice about using or taking alcohol and drugs. And so it's also a question of some of the people you're seeing outside, how many of them are in such an acute level of mental health or behavioral health need, that they're not going to be able to stay in a village even if they wanted to. And so the short answer is that we don't really know, but we know that villages fill up quickly. Would this mean you see a dramatic reduction of people living in tents on the street? I don't know. It would depend on how many villages that you actually built. Todd or Greg, do you have anything to add to this?
I'll just add that, and yeah, I think that number is an important thing. Villages aren't going to be the thing, that there's enough villages to solve everything and that everyone wants to go into them, but maybe, you know, part of different options. One important thing to recognize is that the village model was really started by people experiencing homelessness and activists. And so beginning with Dignity Village and advanced with Hazenah Grove and others. And so it is, there is a sensitivity to it that's built in there. And by bringing on people with lived experience as part of any effort, any, as part of the design team, I think that it will greatly increase the amount of sensitivity built into it. That's going to make it really much more desirable and habitable for folks.
Anything else, Commissioner Willie? For just right now?
Yeah, I like said, I've got a number of questions and maybe we'll compile those or something later, because I don't want to take up too much time. So I'll stop and invite others to join.
Commissioner Trees.
Thank you, and thank you for this presentation. It was really very interesting. I, you know, I look at this as a tool. We've got a big problem, and it's a piece of the puzzle as we work toward solutions. The one thing I'd ask you is if you could encapsulate for me, what are, what are, what are the reasons that a village might not be successful? What are some of the things that, that we need to be thinking about in total here, aside from, I understand NIMBYism. Okay, that's not, that doesn't count. I'm talking more about internal type of issues. Can you help me with that?
Maybe I'll say a couple of things. First, one, I think that it's going to depend a lot on how you set up the metrics for success and how you measure that. If it's about number of people transitioning to permanent housing, if that was the measure of success, there's going to be, need to be open bed, open housing for people to go to, certainly. And then also the support to be able to help with those transitions. In terms of overall villager satisfaction, I think what we've seen is that really giving people a voice and having them have agency and be part of the building the community agreements makes a really big, big difference. Any of my colleagues want to add anything?
Thank you. I appreciate it. And I don't mean to sound negative, but I'm just curious about the flip side a little bit.
Yeah, I would add also that it's thinking about the degree of which you're supporting people in terms of the design of the village. And, you know, is there, are you doing tents? Or are you actually doing secure places with locks? And they give people a sense of, and again, it's a sense of having a secure, stable place. And I think that we could draw a parallel from the successes that we're seeing with motels across the country in terms of transitioning people into housing. It's that set aside, isolated space to live your life while being able to still access services, including community facilities, that becomes really instrumental.
And something that we often take for granted, just the dignity of choice to have the ability to have your pets, the ability to have your kids visit friends over, we heard so often, especially during the COVID year, how isolating the experience could be because they, for health reasons, could not have friends and family come to the village. But I wasn't told, Greg, you can't have any of your friends and family over your house. And so there are times in which if there's too much of a top-down structure in terms of leadership with staff, with the perception that staff are making all the decisions, that villagers can feel like they are being infantilized, or that they don't have the ability to be adults with the ability to make choices and take risks. And so again, that emphasis on the villager experience and on villagers having a say in how they're designing their pods, who they're inviting over, how activities are structured, how rules are made, all really, really important things that we heard time and time again. And especially at the self-governed village where that's really like part and parcel with how the village operates, a lot of satisfaction and a sense of empowerment and being able to live the lives that they wish to live.
Anything else, Commissioner?
Again, thank you. I appreciate the input and the perspective.
Go ahead, Commissioner Rogers.
Well, I would echo, thanks for picking at what really is a very difficult subject. It's one in which there's no easy solutions. We understand we have folks in need. It's one in which there's no easy solutions. We understand we have folks in need. We understand state's funding, mental health services has been abysmal at best. We understood we, back many years ago, we closed all the facilities where people could go, had certain needs. We, we, we all get what the problem is. What I'm going to ask is maybe a nasty question, but I'm known to do that because I hear it from different constituents. And we all come from different areas and have different folks who ask us different things. For any of you who are old enough, and I don't see anybody on here other than maybe me, Jerry might know this. But there was a film that was, Kevin Costner says, it was, you know, about the dreams where you build it and they will come. And he was building the baseball, guy him out in his cornfield and we all remember that. And it was called Field of Dreams, as I recall the movie. Many people are concerned that you build it and they come. Frankly, for many areas in this region that are not in Portland, and I have to disclose to you, I was born and raised in Portland. I went to your alma mater and graduated from it. And so I, I'm a Portland kid through and through. But having said that, there's many people who don't like the area anymore. And they're voting in two ways. One is with their feet. And the other way is with their underground descent. And I always liked to, I'm a consensus guy. I like to build consensus if possible. What do you say? And or do you have any data about why if we continue to build, they won't continue to come from other states and other regions, other areas? And what do you tell about communities who are saying, yeah, I supported the Affordable Housing Bond for Metro because it was the right thing to do. We're building, but doesn't seem to be helpful. And now we're putting in new facilities that, you know, I, I think you're driving people away from my, my cities and my, my neighborhoods. I, I, I don't know that the Portland region is a desirable place to be located, either for one, myself or my business. And I'll just say one other comment. What I do for a real living is I'm a CPA and everybody's now getting their metro tax forms and looking at it. And I tend to deal with people, obviously in that business with that more higher income. And the discontent, the discomfort, I can't express to you how unhappy people are. And looking at relocating, looking at taking their businesses elsewhere. And it's not a solution that I find palatable. I'm trying to find solutions to keep people there and to understand that we have needs that we need to address. So what, what can you, I was very long-winded, but I, what can you tell me to say? And I know it's not going to be punchy one-liners, but what can I say to people? Don't despair. We're not quite the Ukraine, though we feel like it. And sometimes we're not there and we can offer some solutions and keep the faith. You know, we're trying to do what needs to be done. Is there any hope? And what would you tell us about this attracting people into areas that they aren't in right now?
Yeah, so I don't think this is a nasty question at all. I think it's a very real question and it is part of the discussion space, not just here in the Portland region, but across the country. I will also say, of course, I know what Field of Dreams is as a movie. You probably don't want to know how old I was when I saw it.
You, you appear to be.
About the aging factor.
You appear to be about thirty-two, so that's what I would guess.
I really like you, Commissioner. I really like you. You're in my neighborhood, friend. So I would say that first, the data in terms of people who are moving here, who become homeless, not moving here and are homeless, that people who are moving here and become homeless in the region has shown up anywhere between thirty and fifty percent, which is the same percentage of people who are not from Portland, who are housed, who lived here. So we're seeing similar populations. I don't know what the latest data has been on people who are moving here and moving here for services, but it tends to be a very small portion of the overall population. I think one of the things to keep in mind is magnitude. So if you're looking at the number of people, we used twenty-seventeen data a while ago, but we don't think it's changed all that much in terms of magnitude. If you looked at the tri-county area in twenty-seventeen, about fifty-five hundred to six thousand people were unsheltered across that year. If you also look at the people who were in the shelter system and the young people who were in K through twelve, who experienced homelessness, you're really getting into about forty thousand people experiencing homelessness. And so when I get this question about despair and is help coming, I have to depress people further by saying the, the need is much more significant than people are actually realizing, right? And so if we could only had to find housing for six thousand people, we could probably do that a lot faster. But we're really talking about magnitudes more of housing needs. So you've got that going on. I'm sure your housing department is like, like bursting to jump in and say, this is exactly how many placements we've made this year. This is exactly how many units have come online or are available. But it really comes down to making housing accessible faster. Right now, there's actually a press conference going on with a bunch of the nonprofit service providers talking about a new challenge to get to three thousand units in the next six months by looking at innovative strategies. So I think it is really fundamentally about looking and seeing, not just building housing, but are there, you know, more luxury units available for acquisition? If you want people to be off the streets and looking at motels and villages as increased shelter. It really is, I know at some level, that expression, trying to squeeze blood out of a turnip, right? You're trying to really like find every unit possible. Landlord pledges, landlord programs to make sure that your landlords are comfortable bringing people in who might not be willing to accept a certain level of risk. So there are units, there are more units than I think we conventionally think of. And that is what's going to be the real solution. And you are doing it, right? You are doing it. It is just slow. And so my question is continually, what can we do to make that part faster? Relying on shelter solutions is where you get into the revolving door of people going in and out of shelter, conventional shelter and back onto the streets.
Can I just ask one follow-up? Because the point that you made at the very beginning is one that resonates with me. When we were talking about, for instance, mental health issues, you had to paint a picture that they are us.
Yep.
And I think that's what you just did. I've never heard that before. But what people are unhappy about, it's those folks over there and they don't, they don't identify. Does that make sense? It's not people from our community. It's somewhere else. They're coming in bothering us. It's somebody else's problem. Is there any, any work that's being done to paint the picture that they are us? That's saying that these aren't some foreigners, foreigners invading our shores. These are people who are in our communities. They're us. And if it's all from out of state, then we need to be honest about that. But what you're telling me, that's not, that's not true. It's people in our own communities who've been here, who are experiencing this. So is your group or any group painting that picture so that we don't have this, well, that's them and I don't like them? Versus saying, no, they're us. They're just like you or I. They just have needs.
Yeah, so we've got a podcast where we interview people. We interview experts in housing and policy, as well as people who are experts and lived experience with homelessness. Here Together has a lot, there are a campaign that helped advance the metro supportive services measure. They've got a lot of videos of people experiencing homelessness. I know our Joint Office of Homeless Services in Multnomah County is starting to do that work, as do several of the service providers. I know that any set of us would be thrilled to come and help y'all put on a forum or to highlight that. And, and that is definitely also something I think Metro was looking into. So emphasizing the stories and the narratives of people who are from here. And also like, what does it take to move into housing, right? What does that process look like? Because I think it's very opaque, right? It's not that you like get a lease and then hand someone their keys and everything's fine, right? There, it's not that simple. And so I think that was, that's an area that we've been looking at talking about.
Our center has also done a lot of work looking at homelessness among students and staff at PSU. I think this is often a population that people can identify with, but don't always identify as struggling with housing insecurity. We found that upwards of half of students are struggling with housing insecurity. Upwards to twenties percent experienced some form of homelessness in the last year, lots of food insecurity. We have a colleague, Dr. Casey McKinney, who just worked on creating a comic book, a book of stories about student homelessness that really does an effective job at normalizing experience and showing how common of experience it is and how it is us. It's not them.
Commissioner Rogers, anything else at the moment? Okay, Commissioner Trees.
First of all, to your comment about the PSU's environment, I think whenever you hear Mark Mitsui, the president of Portland Community College, talk, he speaks about housing insecurity and, and what's happening in his student population as well. I have a question that's really directed at staff and that is, are we as Washington County looking at this tool as well? I don't know the answer to that.
We are looking at multiple tools and the memo in your packet does reference the multiple tools. And I would ask that Mr. Kreitz, talk to our, talk to that approach. And I do want to just express this research, we knew it was coming. And so we're very thankful to hear this because it does really align to how our team is thinking about our housing options. So Josh?
Yeah, morning Chair Harrington and Board. Josh Kreitz, Assistant Director of the Housing Department. Yeah, so I, I think the alternative shelter memo that was referenced, really does talk about the continuum of shelter options, right? Everything from the non-congregate shelters that we're seeing with hotels, congregant shelters, which I think a lot of us have visited, and this alternative sheltering model, which we do have some experience with, right, from COVID when we had the Safe Sleep Village and we also had a Safe Sleep RV Village that were actually, just like our friends from PSU said, they were heavily wanted and we had wait lists really, really quickly for folks to get in. So we do see this as a continuum and we do see these are as options that we're exploring. And staff will continue to, to bring these options forward over the course of the upcoming weeks and months.
Mr. Kreitz, can you just speak to our current community, community engagement effort to engage community on siting options?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So I, I think that's a really, really important point that as we cite shelters, we've seen over the last couple of years, anytime you cite a shelter, it's a big community process. And, and that doesn't matter if it's a Safe Sleep Village, if it's a hotel, if it's a congregant shelter. And so we're in the middle right now of a couple of week process where we're going out to the community and talking about shelter siting criteria. I believe the first one was just on Tuesday night. And so we have some other ones coming up this week and weekend. And that's allowing us to engage with the community and really have a thoughtful dialogue with the community about what that shelter siting criteria should look like. What are the commitments? What are the things that we should be looking at? With again, the, the idea that as we look at different options, ranging from congregant to non-congregant to alternative, that we have a criteria that we can also utilize.
Commissioner Trees, did that take care of your question? Okay, Commissioner Phi, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. I was going to ask to our esteemed speakers, what is the financial cost? Like, what is the, what does it take? How much does it take to have a, you know, a village of, I'll just throw it, a forty up and running? And then I also wanted to ask a question. One of the slides had a sort of a bubbles and one of the bubble mentioned public agencies and it said funding and resources. And some of the early conversations I've had about my journey of learning, you know, what are the solutions to homelessness, you know, permanent housing or housing just being the answer, but exploring what are some temporary solutions out there? One of the things I learned was about a public and private partnership being the one of the best practice approach to solve, you know, having some type of temporary sheltering option out there for homelessness. So I didn't know if you could speak to that. If there was a public and private partnership, what are those private partnerships? And here in Washington County, we do have Intel, Nike and, and especially Intel themselves are actually experiencing this issue with, with their own, not, not from homelessness, but contractors that are coming in and the need for a site for their RVs. And so I, I don't know if you have any pointers and some answers about the financial picture.
It's, it's such a good one and it's, it's a little difficult to answer. But I'm going to try to get specifics, but in some ways, there are, there are a lot of variables and it depends on what you want. I think if you were just to think, we're going to go out tomorrow and do a twenty to thirty-person village, or what's a, what's a budget? I think you probably want to think about one to one and a half million. And that one thing about a village, and if we look back at the Kent Women's Village example, we tried to cut that cost in half by working with, with, you know, construction contractors, construction firms, doing pro bono. There's a lot of work involved in that. And on, on the other hand, you get a lot of stakeholders involved in something that wouldn't be involved otherwise, right? And then they're suddenly in it and they are having tangible, they're tangibly involved in addressing homelessness. And so in terms of community building, there's something really great about building those partnerships and leaning on those, those donations and working with private firms and otherwise. One big question is the ongoing operations costs, right? And you all, you're, you all will have a better idea about, about what that is. But some models are self-governed and really don't require much at all. And then others have, some of the villages have two full-time managers that are there the whole time. So whole time meaning two forty-hour a week positions. So I think it's much, I think the capital cost is, can be fairly clear, assuming that you're given land. But then the operating cost is going to depend a lot on how you set it up and then what kind of partnerships there are there to support it. I know that's pretty, that's pretty vague. It's, it's a little bit, it's a little bit hard to, to give a number without, without a very honest, without being a specific project.
We have operating costs associated with our work around our criteria for camp hygiene, those types of things as well, correct? Can that information be used and applied?
Yeah, Commissioner Trees, I was talking about our current operations, like our encampment programs, homeless shelters. Yeah, we have a lot of good data and I mean, we stood up two villages back in twenty-twenty as well. So we, we have a lot of data about, you know, what the costs are to stand it up. But I, I think our speakers brought up really good points. Like, there's a lot of variations in there that could change the cost. How do you staff it? What type of materials? What types of structures are you using? Where are you putting it? Security, no security, all those different types of things can really drive cost. But yeah, we have a lot of really good data about our encampment programs and past projects that we've done.
And I have one last question, Chair Harrington, and then I'll give you time to ask your questions. Josh talked about doing the, we have a plan to do community engagement on alternative sheltering and what, how the community feels. I know early on in the presentation, you talked about sort of barrier to entry and, and the correlation between barrier to entry to and neighbor feedback. Is there any lessons learned that we should, as we embark on this journey on community engagement around this specific issue? Is there any lessons learned or some things that we should bubble out for our community so that we can think about solutions ahead of time before those problems arise here in Washington County?
Talking about community outreach with people who are housed or people who are unhoused?
Josh Kreitz, our community engagement is just any.
I mean, we're reaching out very broadly, Chair Phi. We're reaching out extremely broadly. We want to talk to our housed and unhoused neighbors about, you know, how we do this work. So we're being as inclusive as possible.
So I would say from like the, the housed neighbor perspective, it is, I think, early information with a lot of educational material and pictures. I think, you know, showing pictures of what you are imagining doing does so much more than letting it run to people's imagination. I think getting those messages out there, even if
I think getting those messages out there, even if as you're doing that engagement, it's part of it's asking like, you know, what kind of, what are your concerns about alternative shelter models? And asking, would this model be acceptable or okay, right? And showing that. I think it's a tricky situation because it is very hard for me as a community engagement specialist and an urban planner to say, we should be asking neighbors, what, house neighbors, what things they find acceptable about their unhoused neighbors and giving them that power. At the same time, that is often where the largest controversy shows up. And so I think that's a tough needle to thread, but I think it's also the hardest one. I think when you're also doing the community engagement, asking people like, what are their biggest concerns? Right? We've got data about some of those concerns going down. And then asking people who might be really excited and we're building relationships with neighbor, house neighbors, who are excited to be part of the welcoming process. I mean, some people have gone door-to-door adjacent to where the villages are being cited to knock on doors and say, hey, this has been our experience. This is why you should actually welcome a village. So I think that those would be some of the top things I would think about.
I think the point Dr. Zabata made around being specific about it is really important because so often neighbors are going to immediately think of tents. They're gonna think that these are going to be a lot of tents in their neighborhood, and that's not the case. These are organized places where people, it's not attracting other campers. You know, we found in St. John's that people have been very pleased with how organized it is, how it's managed, how it's run, much more in comparison to how the neighborhood looked prior to the village coming in. So being able to help anticipate some of those NIMBY comments that people make and address them. Having people that experience, talk about their experience can be helpful. But we've also seen it go really badly in terms of really toxic meetings where people were then put on display as the unhoused person that lives in the village. And I felt very worried and concerned about that person's well-being, even though they were very strong in the moment. So thinking about maybe separate meetings of housed and unhoused people because those, those meetings will become toxic and quite potentially traumatizing for unhoused people is really important. And then when you're talking to unhoused people, being again, really clear and specific about and honest about what the site will be. Is it low barrier? Is it high barrier? I think the idea is often, you're going to require me to come up here and surrender my pet, my belongings, require me to engage in services. And so being able to dispel those types of myths for unhoused are just as important as dispelling myths for housed people.
And before I forget, one of the data points I forgot to include earlier is we actually analyzed property values around villages to see if they went down, which is one of the biggest concerns. And of the three villages, three out of four villages we analyzed, the three, three of them showed no appreciable change in property values related to the village. The fourth one showed some drop, but there's several conflating factors that we're not sure how to interpret fully. So that's a fun data point to have and be able to tell people your property values aren't going down.
We also hear anecdotally from villagers that they help to essentially provide some, you know, community policing around those sites. This is an important place to them, and they don't want to see crime happening around it. And so in many ways, and they call police if they see criminal activity happening. And so in some ways, that this notion that it's gonna become unsafe if it's here, there's at least anecdotal and observational data that that is not true. There needs to be more systematic, you know, analysis of crime data to really test that out.
Thank you. I don't have any other questions, Chair Harrington.
Do any other commissioners have any questions or comments at this point? Okay, I have a few. So you've research experts. Thank you very much for coming to us today. I'm wondering, if it's so straightforward, then why is the community of Portland having such a difficult time opening another six or so Safe Sleep Villages?
So I think
the value of your expertise on that. Thank you.
So I think on one hand, you're deep into a political question that would be better asked to Mailer Wheeler and Commissioner Ryan. And so I think that's the reality. There's like a whole set of those things. And how they are choosing each to operate or not operate with community members. I do think my understanding is that the neighbors are some of the biggest pushback. I have talked to neighbors in, in one, near one of the sites, and they have been on board under some very narrow conditions, set of circumstances, and now they're not on board. There are other things that I could comment to, but I don't think are appropriate for a public forum in terms of some of the things that are happening that I think have delayed that. I don't think that it's, I think it is straightforward to locate a site. But then you do get into this, does anybody want the neighborhood in their backyard? And I agree with Commissioner Treese, like NIMBYism is everywhere, so why count it? Well, if you're not gonna take the stance as elected officials and as the government to say, we actually don't care about your NIMBYism and we're doing it, then you end up in this, this circle of the neighbors screaming and listening to them. And we'll be meeting with Commissioner Ryan, I think, next month to talk in more detail because I'm hoping to really emphasize the majority of your neighbors don't care about this at all. And this is really being driven by a set of people with interests.
Thank you. I appreciate that candor. Could you speak to any research that helps us navigate the question that some community members have about, okay, so this helps people in the now, but really, what are the trends for this being a technique to ensure that people do move on to more permanent supportive housing? You know, how do, how do we tap into research such that one storyline that people are just living off the dole don't continue?
Okay, well, people are gonna keep
Questions that we as elected officials have to navigate.
So I'm gonna let Dr. Townley answer some of this. I'm gonna say that part of, I think, one of the challenges with homelessness work at all is that inherently, people are going to be living off the dole, so to speak, for quite some time. That's what a housing voucher is. And if we're gonna do like the whole, like, just like us, most of us who are homeowners who are claiming our mortgage interest tax deduction are also living off the dole in a form of government assistance. And so I think it's framing, what is government assistance and why? I think the more important question is, when can we see camps go away, right? And, you know, how, how do we know that this can help people move into housing? Of course, we've talked first about the importance of having housing. I'll ask Dr. Townley to speak to this in more detail. There are other studies around the country that have seen people moving into housing as well, and we're happy to poll them.
Yeah, the evidence comes locally. When we look at Kenton Women's Village, the 40 women in a three-to-four-year period transition to permanent housing. Clackamas Veterans Village, its first two-year, 30 villagers transitioned to permanent housing. People want to transition to permanent housing. They say that in surveys, they ask, when we ask them, they say they're excited about that opportunity. They want to give the spot up to someone else. They don't want to stay there. The COVID years have been difficult, and it's required, it's necessitated people to stay in that, in the villages longer than I think we would see. Then we saw pre-COVID, and then what we'll see post-COVID. But there have to be the options for, of places for them to go. And so that has to always be, and whether that's an agreement that people make with supportive housing, with supportive housing providers, that certain beds are specifically earmarked for villagers. We then get into equity concerns if that was a model that was implemented. But that's one, one way you could look at it is that working with providers like Cascade of Aver Healthcare, Central City Concern, to develop those relationships, to have a constant kind of revolving door of either people who are in need for more transitional housing, having an option to stay at the village, or vice versa, people who are ready for something more stable and independent, moving into, into their housing sites. Let's see, I had another thought there. And Todd, if there's anything you want to jump in about with the transition to? But again, by and large, the vast majority of villagers do want to, do see it as a permanent or as a temporary, something for here and now, not a permanent. Villages like Dignity Village and Hazelnut Grove, though, is, it is important that those are set up in a different style in terms of those being thought of as more permanent homes for folks, especially Dignity Village. Those people aren't necessarily transitioning to their housing types, but the cost associated with service provision there, as Todd noted, is far lower. And so that's not that same concern that people should have about, you know, living off the dole. Todd, anything else you want to add about that?
No, I think that you hit on those good points where we can, we can look at the data provided by Dugud Volnoma about the Bets Village. We will be able to see some about St. John's and Catholic Charities for Kent Women's Village for, for specific rates of transition.
Thank you for helping me feel confident that the data is there, the research is there. Third question, are there any villages that the research shows have been in place for more than five or 10 years successfully? Or is it this constant churn of get it going, it's located for three to five years, and then it has to end up moving elsewhere?
Actually, Portland's home to the oldest, first and oldest village, Dignity Village since 2000. And Hazelnut Grove has been there since 2015. All the villages, Kent Women's Village was always considered a pilot project. And so it was always intended to move, and it's been on its site, and it's intended, there's no, there's no sun setting on the site it's on now. And so I think just because it's, although it's been around since 2000, as a, as a concept, it was really fought for by people experiencing homelessness and those activists, it really is fairly new in terms of getting government support and otherwise. And so so far, while they have the ability to move, they are, they're, they're in place, and they've, they've remained in place.
Thank you. So I do have just two more questions for our staff. But first, I want to step back and comment that I have tremendous faith in our staff. They are very familiar with best practices, not only here in our area, but across the country, and have been very innovative, thoughtful, and caring in trying things that they think are appropriate with Washington County and have built an incredible co-creation program. I approached this whole arena, however, with a little bit of caution. I want to thank Ms. Angie and staff for putting together the memo because I wanted to make sure that we weren't pushing our staff to respond faster than they felt they could handle or support. And I do so because when I ran for this position in 2018, my opponents alleged that electing me would bring Portland problems and techniques to Washington County. As though I wouldn't work to ensure that we were developing Washington County appropriate solutions. And I have certainly shown through my track record that I am all about Washington County appropriate solutions and that I do so openly. That's why we're having a discussion here and not behind closed doors. But I am the chair, and as the chair, I have found that in our very first bridge shelter opportunity, our staff worked really hard to try and leverage additional funding through the Project Turnkey Program. They briefed us multiple times that, you know, it was still risky that we'd get that grant money. But they were trying their best. They did put a co-creation model together for that Bridge Shelter Hillsborough, just as they had done to develop the Supportive Housing Services local implementation strategy. Nonetheless, I find myself being the tip of the spear and being blamed for people being disappointed in our early engagement for that program and needing to help convince folks that we really were committed to a co-creation model. We see it now because their public records request doubting that our CAO and county staff engaged with the Hillsborough City Council along the way. We'll see how that effort goes. I don't know what the documentation is, but I believed our staff. I really appreciate today's presentation. We know from communication with our own staff that they are using the storyboard model because we've seen it in practice already with our affordable housing projects as well as with the supportive housing measure. So, you know, it's, it's a challenging space because we as commissioners, in my viewpoint, we're generalists. We're not the specialists. So we oftentimes find ourselves in meetings where folks are asking us to explain this specific example of thus and such happening or this situation, and how will that work? But we're not the specialists. So I have two questions, one for our staff and one for our panelists. So Ms. Angie and Mr. Kreitz, I think this, this question is best goes to you. Are there any county requirements that have kept any of our 13 cities from being able to have pilots of their own Safe Sleep Villages on their own? Is there anything about our authority as a county that has hindered their ability to embrace such techniques? I'm really interested.
Yeah, no, I don't believe so, Chair, and our staff are actively working with staff from many of the cities. And I think Josh can speak to this more directly than I can. I can state frequent interactions with City of Beaverton staff, City of, City of Hillsborough, Forest Grove, and Tigard as well. But Mr. Kreitz, can you answer that a bit more specifically?
Yeah, no, I, I think we are having all of these different conversations with our jurisdictional partners about citing different types of sheltering programs. And realistically, we, we need their partnership to, to do so, so.
And I will, Chair, if I can add, I will refer to that memo. I think I've referred to that memo a few times during this presentation. But in the memo, it does speak to the work that's occurring in partnership with Beaverton and Hillsborough. The Supportive Housing Services dollars, we don't, and according to the LIP and IGA, those are really dollars that come into Washington County, but they're going out to community-based organization governmental partners to really meet the goals and objectives that are listed in our LIP, which is, for any of the viewers, our local implementation plan. We can't do this work alone. And so I really appreciated the presentation today lifting up creativity of, you know, partnership with private sector. As we move forward, we are very committed to exploring all types of partnerships, multi-sector jurisdictional partnerships, and the health, housing affordability, houselessness, the full continuum, I can share is a common conversation amongst our governmental partners here in Washington County.
Thank you. And all of this leads to my final question for our, our panel. So I've been on the county commission now for just over three years. And it, it took a good two years for me to feel much more grounded in the housing continuum and these multiple approaches. And I always wondered, the folks that participated on the, the crafting of the SHS measure, right? So, you know, as well as the Affordable Housing Bond as a metro counselor. So I'm wondering if So I'm wondering if. And this is. So let me, let me just back up. So my question is this. You have had the opportunity of seeing the memo from our staff and. You know, being informed or aware to whatever degree you've had time with. Our Washington County approach from the local implementation plans. So I feel like as a, as a one of five. I've, I've given my support and direction to our staff to make the most of these dollars. And please meet those goals and the community need as fast as you can. And pull me in as much as, as you, you think is appropriate and you need to, to help. But nonetheless, I'm wondering. Are there some board level decisions versus staff level decisions that you think we're not doing? I'm just wondering, as you are the researchers. What more should we be doing as board members? That you don't think we're already doing or considering?
Um, I would need to do a lot more reading and understanding about what you are doing before I was willing or capable of weighing into that. It's very easy to be outside and and rant about what elected officials aren't doing. Without a good understanding of what they are doing. I would say the tool that, there's a couple of tools that I have not seen used. And it could be in discussions in your space, but things like vacant or unoccupied property taxes. I think is one of the tools that we have not looked at. So, you know, people who are buying up property and then letting it sit open. I don't know if there's a way to handle that with the newer apartments that have come online that are. It's financially better for them to stay partly filled and partly not filled. So occupancy taxes on rental apartments, can you get into that as well? Those are some tools. Everyone hates it when I say it, but again, I'm a land use planner. Eminent domain. Is not an exciting word, but or phrase, but imminent domain is a tool that our governments have. And, you know, no one wants to get into it, but we have used imminent domain with a lot lower standards for a lot less connected. Activities than literally public safety and welfare for people needing housing. So that's a tool. And then lastly, and I haven't had a chance to look at y'all's housing sales listings. In Portland, we have a number of newly built unoccupied luxury building, apartment buildings that are for sale. Never lived in, completely unoccupied, one hundred percent for sale. And some of them are surprisingly inexpensive for what they are. So we've got like a ten bedroom, I mean, a ten unit new unoccupied apartment building for sale for two point five million. And so, you know, obviously that is going to be a cost. It's more than we were probably expecting to pay per unit. But this is the time for that creativity, right? The goal is, the question is, do we want to solve homelessness quickly? Or do we want to solve it cheaply? And that becomes, I think, an important frame. But I'm more than happy to, to read more deeply and to talk to people and then come back and say what I think you're doing right or wrong. I'm an academic. I love that.
I would invite your colleagues. Really, it's an open question. There's no wrong answer. Trust me. There's no wrong answer and I'm not going to quote you moving forward. I'm just here to learn.
This isn't going to be a satisfying answer. I would say that I appreciate you inviting us to the table. That shows an openness to learn about different options for housing. I will say though, as we've said throughout the presentation, don't get too, too distracted. With only thinking of temporary shelter options, the solution is permanent housing, specifically housing first as an evidence-based approach. Approach, especially for people with serious mental illnesses and addictions. That should be the focus, but understanding that people need something for the here and now, just don't allow that to occupy the entirety of the space that you're spending on housing solutions.
And I, I want to share it with Dr. Zapod. I'd be, I'd love to do more research and then make recommendations. But I will say that often a missed opportunity with governments is to recognize work that's already being done really well. That's not always publicized, that involves people experiencing homelessness, things that folks are doing for themselves or in, in community groups and. Supporting work that's already being successful that might not even be spotlighted right now. Can often lead to great results as opposed to starting from scratch and having to be, be all top down.
Well, thank you, panelists. I do appreciate your willingness to engage with us. About what we're doing, how we're doing it and what we might consider doing differently moving forward. I was just going to ask commissioners, anything else? I also want to thank Commissioner Phi for bringing this presentation forward to us in this forum today. Go ahead, Commissioner Therese.
Thank you. And thank you for the presentation. Thank you to Nafisa for, for arranging this and, and hosting it. I appreciate the information. What I'm not sure I understand yet, and this doesn't have to happen today. But I would like to understand what staff might need from us as leadership. To support this type of action moving forward. So, and like I said, you can take some time and think about that. But that would be helpful for me to, to have a, a full understanding.
Well, Commissioner Therese, I will point you to the April twelfth meeting where we are scheduled to come back to your board. With a summary of what we learned through our engagement for various options. And so I think at that time, we'll be better prepared to answer that, that question. But I think it's really important that we listen to our community.
And so I assume that there will be recommendations on the twelfth.
Yes, yes.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
So, so we know what the community engagement approach is. You've included that here. We've seen it, you know, some weeks ago. I don't know if it was one week, two week or more ago. But what about city councils? Are we touching, is, is staff touching bases with city councils on this approach? I mean, how do we test their willingness to consider this?
Well, I, I could say at a staff level, we, we have a monthly meeting with. Leadership from different cities, talking about what we're, what we're working on. And I know that our approach here for our community outreach has gone out really far and wide to, to all of our different communities, but. You know, I think there's more opportunities to engage with our, our jurisdictional partners and city councils. We're absolutely excited to take those opportunities up even further.
Well, I know I've gotten totally mixed messages from mayors. You bring us too much, you ask us for too much input, and then why didn't you ask us? And I, you know, there is no willing, there is no clear formula. So I, I've tried to share information with them and see if any of them want to engage. We'll go from there. Okay, Ms. Angie or Commissioner Phi, anything to close this topic for today?
Yeah, I just want to thank our speakers and presenters. Thank you so much for coming here. I'm, you know, really interested in. How I can participate in the solution to homelessness and. You know, my own background, my own lived experience. I think that's, we could do something and not force people to use the streets as a waiting room for permanent housing. And we can do something in the meantime. And, and I'm really confident. Our team, Josh, and the conversations that I've had, it's really empowered me to get on this journey to explore. What, what else we can do. And it's actually was Josh Kreitz that I learned that, wait a minute, the house, the supportive housing services isn't just about permanent housing. There are other buckets. So I, I really trust our experts in Washington County and the staff we have and. And look forward to partnering with P S U and to just do this the right way. And we're unique in our own way, Washington County. And I think we do things differently because the way we structured and the way our, our community operates. So I'm really interested in. You know, not, not like recreating the wheel, but sort of. Picking and designing a model that would work for this community, because we're quite different from Portland and what's happening there. But, but I, and I say that as a person that actually also grew up in Portland myself and lived there for a long time. But Washington County residents are different and I think what we will hear from neighbors feedback. Will be different. And also what we hear from our. Our people who are experiencing homelessness will be different. But this is really urgent. We have encampments that are closing. In my own district, we have the one ninety seventh and baseline. That's going to be cleaned up because P T E needs to come in. And then I can't help myself and ask, well, where would those people go? You know, it wasn't a long time ago that I was a refugee, so I know what it's like to sleep in the streets and use a tent. But, you know, we're in the land of prosperity and I came here to build this, you know, to build my life and. Our family life. And I think we can do more and, you know, and in terms of people being stuck there and forever utilizing. You know, I, I, I came here, I was on food stem. I'm not on food stem now. So I think people, if we create, you know, put people on the right path. Like the micro enterprise that you mentioned is a great idea and it's a really good thing to incorporate because we need to help people. Get on that path to prosperity, to be self-sufficient. People want to be self-sufficient. Nobody wants to depend on anybody and. You know, so I'm with you on this journey and, and I really appreciate your. Sharing your brains with us today and coming here and look forward to this partnership and. I'm so glad our board asked really tough questions and, you know, this homeless issue shouldn't be one vote or two vote or three votes. It needs to be unanimous. It needs to be all five of us are in this and want to see this solution. So I'm really looking forward to all of us saying that this is the right path and not just few of us.
So Ms. Angie. To Commissioner Phi's point about us supporting this path. We have a memo that replays for us that we've already enabled this whole continuum. So I'm still left wondering. Do we just wait until we get more impact and, or more in, input from. You know, in that April twelfth, is it going to boil down to us having to give more precise? Direction on where to put dollars? I guess I'm missing the point. The, the fine point.
So from my, I'll share what I believe, the direction that we've received from the board and also. Our L I P, we are looking at all alternative shelter models as listed in the first page of the memo. We are, for any of those models, we do need to engage with the community. And so on April twelfth, I'll, I feel that staff can better answer. Some of your question, Chair, but we are exploring all tools in the toolbox with our partners as we move forward. And ensuring that we are, we have community engagement centered. As we move forward with these options. So I know that's still probably not as concrete, but we, it's, it's a journey that we're on right now.
And I can say from the staff level, you know, we're engaging, we're, we're listening to our partners, we're listening to our jurisdictional partners, we're listening to our agencies. Because we do have that goal, two hundred and fifty year, you know, year-round shelter options. And again, this is a part of that continuum. But all the things that Tanya brought out, we, we need that partnership. We need that communication. We, we need to be able to engage with the community, whether it's a congregate shelter, a non-congregate shelter or alternative shelter. All the same drivers come into place here. And so I could tell you staff are actively working the L I P. That was, that was what the voters asked of us. That's what the board, that's why our community asked of us. We're working all those aspects as, as was asked of us.
So the way I hear it is the board has given its policy direction. We've enabled you and what you're trying to do is make sure that we are on the journey with you. And how that is being implemented and that we play a part in the successful championing of it. But I'm not hearing you say that we have to make more policy decisions. At this juncture. Well, we do reserve the right to get smarter moving forward. And so maybe we'll learn more coming up in the middle of April. Thank you. Commissioner Therese, you indicated you had another comment or question?
Oh, I, I just wanted to let everyone on the, in the meeting know that I just got a text from Commissioner Willie saying he had to leave for a presentation. So I must be top on his text stream. So I just wanted to let you know.
Thank you. Well, does anyone else have, so thank you very much, presenters. Thank you for Commissioner Phi. For coming today and helping us continue on our conversation and I'll turn it back over to Commissioner Phi.
Actually, I have a question for you, Chair Harrington, and this is our board initiative. Does that mean, I'm just. Streamlining this for my own head in terms of process. Does that mean this is, alternative shelter is on? Board priority list or what's happening?
Ms. Angie, I'm going to let you handle this one. Thank you.
Yes, and I was leaning back to grab the major initiative. So. S H S, the work of S H S and implementation of S H S is a major work plan initiative for Washington County. Key board components, if there is policy direction that's needed from the board, staff will be coming forward with that. We are, we have committed to the board and I think this does highlight the importance of this work. Two quarterly updates for the board that also our community has the opportunity to hear too on the progress. That we're making. So from my perspective, the policy direction has been given. And we are in the process of implementing and the board has opportunity to hear about that progress on a quarterly basis.
Thank you so much, Tanya, for that explanation. Well done.
So commissioners. Are we done? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair, this is just a roundtable.
I understand, Mr. Clerk Moss. I've tried multiple times to transition off of this topic.
I'm going to. Worked. I'm going, I, I'm going to move to adjourn. And thank you for the, the time spent here. It was beneficial to me and I appreciate the information. Move to adjourn.
Yay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed, the motion carries unanimously four to zero. This work session is, roundtable is hereby adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.